Planning Commission meeting Thursday, November 7th, 2024. Please rise, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Here.
Commissioner Yoder?
Here.
Commissioner Weiner?
Here.
Commissioner Member Two?
Here.
Commissioner McBride? Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Here.
And Chair Whitlam.
Here, thank you. Approval of agenda. Before we do this, I want to amend the agenda to add the short-term rentals. Good on that? We don't need a motion on that, do we? Okay. So approval of agenda at this time, the Planning Commission can take action to approve the November 7th amended agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mick, second.
I'll second.
By Pam. Discussion, none? Please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Member Two?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Yes.
And Chair Whitlam.
Yes, thank you. Conflict of interests. Are any member of the commission that has any conflict with tonight's agenda?
I have one because it's my house that the Lutheran church is affected. So when we get to that light section.
Yes, you can.
I'll step out.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anyone else? No? Great. Approval of minutes. This time the Planning Commission can approve the Thursday, October 3rd, 2024 meeting minutes. Is there a motion? Motion by?
Excuse me.
Wait.
With the draft meeting minutes, there needs to be.
Correction.
Correction.
Yes.
So on page two. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, on page two, under old business, under case number PSP, 124-004 Bridgette Vanderhoff. It reads special use permit valid for two years as determined by Planning Commission. And it should read site plan review level one. Okay.
Make a motion as amended.
And make a motion on that. So Bob? Second. Roger, any further discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Member Two?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Yes.
And Chair Whitlam.
Yes, thank you. Correspondence? All been shared with the PC members, will not be read aloud. Presentations. Chief Glass.
Good evening.
Chief.
My name is Josh Glass, I'm the police chief. I think the last time I was here was maybe a year, maybe longer than that.
About a year, yeah.
Cut off by thanking Teresa for the invite. Just, we're in November, so maybe a year review for the police department. So those of you who don't know, the Manistee City Police Department is authorized for 13 police officers. We handle between 5,000 to 6,000 calls for service a year. Our duties are to protect property, people, and really the call volume we deal with could vary anything from a noise complaint to a felonious assault. So it's unlike other communities, we respond to all types of calls for service. So that's just a snapshot of our department. Our physical apartment is in the basement of this building. And I think it's a beautiful facility. Our fleet, we have four active patrol cars. We have one Polaris that helps us for beach rescue. We work closely with other department, departments of the city, fire department, DPW. So that's just a snapshot of the police department for those who don't know. 2024 was a very unique year as we faced a lot of challenges. Like many departments throughout the state of Michigan, we had staffing challenges. And so, you know, the state of Michigan published research that said there's 20% less people entering the profession of law enforcement. We felt that as well. It was unique in, at one point this year, we were down to nine police officers for the police department because of retirement and unexpected departures. We devise strategies for recruitment retention through wages, collective bargaining, recruitment, job fairs. We utilize state grant funds to sponsor people to the academy, which is similar to what they did probably 30 years ago, where they would find people and they would hire them, then send them to the police academy versus kids going to college, they graduate, go to the police academy. So what we found is that we want to find the local talent that share our principles, core principles and values, and then basically build them into a police officer. It is a, we think of it as a ball of clay and mold them into what we hold dear. We found two local candidates and hired them and sponsored them, and they did a great job in the police academy, and they're doing a good job now. So we are staffed 12 of 13 right now, and we are looking to hire the 13th, hopefully be fully staffed. The challenges will continue as our age demographic for our department. We will probably lose half our department to retirement within the next six years. So 25 years ago, we had a huge hiring cycle, and now we're at that right now. The challenge for me as a police leader is, we just happen to have that cycle at one of the most challenging times in our profession in the last 50 years. A highlight this past year is the city police department was successfully accredited through the state of Michigan, which was a three-year-long process. We put together an accreditation team who put a tremendous amount of work in. And accreditation, for those who don't know, is it's developing policies and procedures that reflect best practices in the profession to maximize effectiveness, efficiency, maximize risk management, and then have a third party through the state of Michigan come in and verify that you're indeed following those policies. So it was a very lengthy process, and I'm very proud of our accreditation team. And now, you know, as soon as you, so to speak, get found accredited, they say, "Good job, chief." Now re-accreditation starts. So it's a continuous process. And a lot of times I get asked, "Why'd you do that? Do you get a bonus? Do the officers get?" No, I think that, to me, it was my number one priority as chief because it maximizes the level of service that you provide your citizens. We don't get gold stars for it, there's no tax break. It just says that we are, we think our service level, we take it so seriously that we want to be at the gold standard. So anyways, that's a highlight. So we face some challenges, we develop strategies to overcome those challenges, we accomplish accreditation. One of the things that's new for us this year is we hired a part-time code enforcement officer to kind of combat some of the issues we've seen in our community with blight. In the past, we've relied on police officers to enforce blight. Those of you who have been in zoning, planning, any type of code enforcement, it's very difficult to enforce that with officers that work 12-hour rotations. We are very fortunate to have Toby Van S, who came to us with a great skill set. His most recent background is he was a former township supervisor in charge of planning and zoning for Thomas Township, retired up north, found our ad, and we interviewed him. And so he's our code enforcement officer, he works 20 hours a week, and to be frank, little supervision is needed. He's kind of been there, done that, is doing a tremendous amount of work. Does a good job working with residents, educating them, works with Jerry Blue in our building department, works with Teresa on some zoning issues. And again, it's a blessing to have someone you can kind of plug and play, meaning there's not a big training process to it. And so from an enforcement standpoint, significantly increase our enforcement. Unfortunately, people don't comply, even after you send them letters or you talk to them, and you have to issue citations. Sometimes you actually have to get court orders. I can tell you Toby was up and running around mid-August, and since August, he's issued over 30 citations. Again, you hate to get to that point, but as our police officers found out over the last four years, sending a letter, talking to them, a lot of cases doesn't get them to comply. Unfortunately, you have to have a consequence. Sometimes you have to have a court order to clean it up, sometimes you have to have a court order to tear down. So I think he works well with Teresa, the police department, and with Jerry Blue. So that's really just kind of a snapshot of, you know, who we are and then what this past year has meant. Do you have any questions for me at all?
Yes, definitely.
Go ahead, anybody?
If you don't mind, since we opened up all our dispensaries, I was concerned, did we get an increase in crime, I guess you might say, along the highway or anywhere?
So I get this question a lot from my fellow chiefs and sheriffs.
Right.
And beforehand, you think, "Well, if we're going to have that, we're going to have this." We don't have any data to suggest that has had an impact, meaning, and the data you would look at would be traffic accidents with marijuana as a factor, those types of things. Now, understanding that you can't say, "Have we had an increase in marijuana arrests?" Well, they essentially legalized marijuana, so they moved the goalposts in that regard. But the data I would rely on, and when this first came out 10 years ago out west, traffic accidents where marijuana was a factor, we don't have data that tells us that has become an issue. And I could tell you, a lot of my peers don't like that answer, but the data is what it is. We don't have significant crime that we can associate with those businesses. So, and that's the answer I get.
Well, we just, you know, I was considering it when we opened up those businesses on what effect it might have on the police department. We weren't sure what it would do. But I'm glad it is what it is. I just was concerned, thank you.
Sure. I could tell you those buildings are remodeled, they look a lot nicer than they did before.
So Chief, congratulations on the accreditation.
Thank you.
I mean, I know that that's pretty impressive. I'm just curious, do you know how many other accredited police forces there are in the state of Michigan?
The number was, and this is an approximate number, because I had this number about six months ago.
Okay.
It was right around 450 or 500 law enforcement agencies in the state of Michigan, and we were, I think, the 62nd to be accredited. And so the Chiefs Association did a great presentation for a police department our size we knew was a huge undertaking. So that's probably one of my sense of pride, the officers, how well they did that, being the size that we are, but managing their essential job functions and this, so. Yeah, we were on a kind of the front edge of it, so we're pretty happy, yeah. Any other questions about law enforcement-related activities, the police department?
You guys are doing a good job, let me say that. A good job.
If you ever have a question, I want to just put a lifeline out there, email me, call me, I'm very responsive. Did you have something, ma'am?
I did, I have one question. I know at one time, and forgive my ignorance on this, the police organization or the department was involved with the teen center. Is that, does that still, do they still have any interaction with that teen center?
The interaction we have is we recommend they do foot patrol, so we force that interaction. So the armory, the teen center, we like to create a presence. I can tell you that that was a minimal presence when we had nine police officers. We were kind of cut down to crucial calls, but now that we are getting closer to full staff, that's the expectation. And we found that over the years, there are issues, well, sometimes we had different, anytime you get kids together, issues. So my expectation is to increase that interaction to kind of deter some of those things.
That'd be great, thank you.
And we do have officers assigned to each of our schools in the city of Manistee as a liaison to, I don't want to say deter crime in our school, but to force positive interaction with kids and police.
I do, Chief, I do have a couple of things. First one is the signs. I know we have Toby now for code enforcement. You know, during the election season, we had a lot of the signs in the city, city proper. You know, we have the yard sale signs and everything. Is there something we can do on that?
Well, I think signs and election signs are two different things according to our city attorney. I know this year, we didn't enforce a sign ordinance for political signs based on advice from the city attorney. I think we're probably going to reevaluate that next year. When it comes to signs in the right-of-way, that's what we would deal with, other signage is more zoning. And my direction to Toby and any officer is if it is a sign that doesn't have an apparent owner and it's a city right-of-way, we take it. Keep it to the police department, they can come get it. If it has a number on it, we take it, call them, they have a certain amount of time to get it. And so, as you know, one sign becomes 10 signs, becomes this. So it's just a matter of having the resources to keep plucking those weeds, if you will, because when yard sale season comes, it's, and our code enforcement officer in August, he said, "Well, I did this." And I called, I said, "Grab the sign, take it to the police department, they can come get it." If it's a sign that is, doesn't have an owner, a handwritten sign, throw it in the garbage, that's better than getting a citation. So we try to work with people, and really it's about shaping community expectations, but every single year, it is a tall task.
Well, I was talking with a friend of mine who's a retired DPW, and when he was in the water department, they were, the DPW people were directed to pick up signs if they were in the city right-of-way.
I don't think that's a practice anymore.
Right. I know you'd have to coordinate that with Jeff, but I just. The other one that I have, you know, if we can clean up the signs, that's great, because I can't stand them, drive me crazy. On Arthur Street, the processing facility on Arthur, authentic 231. Going by in the mornings, going in the gym, or coming back, you get a westerly wind, you can smell marijuana.
We had that complaint, and we had an officer inspect it, and he could smell it. If that's the case, I suspect he probably caught it on the wrong day. What I would recommend is Jerry Blue go out there in front of our officers and see if we, I don't want to say catch the right moment, but if it's a problem, it's a problem, and I'm guessing depending on the wind direction.
Yeah.
Because that is part of their, my understanding is part of their licensing. And so we need to maybe keep a closer eye on that.
Well, the, when that was given, they had charcoal filtering, which you had a zero tolerance, zero smell coming out, so. They're doing something up on the hill, and you have condos now, you're going to have Lakeside Social there, just, I'd hate to have that.
I think the best way to approach that is if someone smells it, and they call us when they smell it, it means that there's an issue with the filter, the wind's the right direction. If we can see it firsthand, then we can address it with the licensing with the state of Michigan. Like I said, someone forwarded me a complaint, so we sent an officer up there, he didn't smell anything, that doesn't mean it's not happening, right? It means maybe the timing was wrong.
Right.
People shouldn't live in that neighborhood, that area, you'd have to deal with that.
Yeah. Yeah, you got to do it to win, you got to deal with the win, you know?
So if you could put the word out, help me, if someone smells it, call us. And sometimes people, "Why don't we call 911 for that?" Well, no, if it's happening, call it, and we'll send somebody right out, and we can address it right then and there.
Even at 7:00 in the morning?
We have officers working 24 hours a day.
All right.
We don't want to bother them at 7:00 in the morning.
Coffee break.
Let Tommy talk to Chief, he'll be just fine.
They take donuts, they get donuts at 7:00?
Oh, no donuts, no donuts.
Any other questions? Thank you for everything here.
Yeah.
Thank you for keeping Manistee safe.
Yeah. Again, thanks for the invite. If you have any questions, anything, just reach out to me directly.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Very nice. Moving along to public comments on agenda-related items, all comments and handouts from the speaker at the podium. We'll go through the chair also, there will not be any interaction between the podium and the audience, these rules cannot be followed, the chair can adjourn the meeting. There will be a five-minute limit to each speaker. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to say something? On up. That's you choosing. Guess when we get to it.
Okay.
Name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Bill Weiner, William Weiner formerly, and I live at 410 Pine Street, along with my wife, in Manistee, of course. I wanted to thank you all for giving me this time to discuss the problem that we have at our location. We moved here 15 years ago, and we love our community and the neighborhood that we live in. It's a very nice neighborhood, nice neighbors mostly, kind of a quiet place, kind of a rural place, so the kind of place you think about Manistee being beautiful. At that time, our neighborhood was pretty quiet and a pretty reasonably lit place. Recently, the Trinity Lutheran Church has redone their church and parking lot, and lights that they used to have that were very non-objectionable have become very objectionable to us. They shine directly in our house, they're high intensity. They do not fit the ordinance, which I did print out, if you guys aren't familiar with it. There are several things that are wrong with the lighting. We have way too much lighting that is glaring and coming, not only on our house, but also on the right-of-way, which is Pine Street, and also on the right-of-way, which is Fifth Street. The lighting is supposed to be shielded so that you cannot see the glare from the lighting element, which previously was much lower intensity and now is very high, the LED lighting. Also, there's a light on the church itself that is supposed to be directed downward, but is actually directed outward. And there's a light over the dumpster, which is totally directed outward. And all of that is against the ordinance, as it's written. I really liked the ordinance, again, protecting our town from light pollution. I think it was very reasonable. I don't know if Trinity Lutheran gave any credence to looking at this. I've discussed, or I've sent letters with them about this problem, and a transformer they have that's very loud. Looking at the sound ordinance, I really don't think there's anything can be done with that. I've talked with my friends who are electrical engineers, and hearing the loud hum in the school, they think the transformer is on its last life and could have problems. But numerous letters to Trinity Lutheran have mostly been non-answered. I think I've sent a total of five letters. The minister, Reverend Raul, sent me a letter, they were going to take it up at one of their meetings, that was last I heard of that. We had one gentleman that came after Sunday services and kind of just said hello and said that they thought they'd fix this, but it's really quite objectionable. I feel like we live in the Oaks or some high-crime area, certainly not where anybody would want to live. I guess they're afraid of the dark or something. I've spoken with my neighbors, Mr. Van Alstine allowed me to speak and say that that's objectionable to him and the Holtgrins as well. I did know about the meeting, and there were some pictures taken, but the pictures do not really reflect how this looks. I have some colored pictures that I could distribute and some black and white copies that show exactly how it really is. And we're not asking really for very much to be done, we want the light shielded so they're not visible from our property. We want the light to be directed on their parking lot rather than the front of our house, our trees and everything else. And I, like I said, we've tried to be good neighbors and discuss these things with them, we really got nowhere with them. So I'm very thankful that you guys will hear my complaint. And if you'd like, I can show you the pictures that.
We have, they're probably maybe the same.
No, those three pictures there are from what they sent me after they corrected it. So we'd like to see yours, too. Yeah, that would be great.
Did the church get ahold of you when they did this lighting change?
When we get to that, I'll speak. Yep, I'll do that then.
That doesn't seem like a problem. We should be able to take care of that.
These are from Trinity Lutheran.
Yeah, I've got those in the.
But these are colored, so you can see.
Yeah.
I'd be willing to answer any questions if you had any.
Well, this is a, just a comment. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Nothing? Thank you. New business, calendar action item required.
So in your packet is the calendar that I'm suggesting that we have, starting in January. It's just been very hard for me to have a city council meeting, and sometimes the election or the historical district meeting and the Planning Commission all in one week.
Yeah, I know.
So I'm asking if that, we can take that calendar, let me flip to it.
You know, you're asking a lot, you know that, Dr.
Yeah, I'm asking to do the second Thursday of the month, if that works out, same time, 7:00 o'clock here. Does anybody object to that, or could we discuss that if that works out? I did have, I believe it was two months that we did have to change it a little bit because of the holiday.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yep. Yep, November and December of next year, so.
Rog, what do you think?
I could work with it.
You sure?
Yeah.
Positive, 100%.
Well, I mean, if, I don't believe, I should be able to get off work, I shouldn't have a problem with that.
Anyway, we don't want any impeding your schedule, so.
No, as long as it's evening, because naptime is afternoon, so this is evening.
Yes, evening still.
Evening, I can do.
Okay, well, that's good. Shelley?
Works for me.
Pam?
I, it's very good for me because I usually have to skip the December meeting because of Slay Bill Weekend stuff.
Oh, right.
Would be wonderful for me.
Oh, good, good.
No issues?
No issues, okay. Bob?
Second one's good, if we went to the third one, I'd be no good.
Okay, well, we're not, but it's good, and second one's good for.
So I would need an action item, if you guys can do a vote.
We would like to make a motion on moving our meetings. Second Thursday in 2025 and moving forward, correct?
I'll make that motion, Mark.
Okay, motion by Roger, second.
Second.
By Shelley, any further discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Member Two?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Yes.
And Chair Whitlam.
Yes. Motion passed. Next is email addresses for you.
Yes, so just trying to remind everyone again that the city would really appreciate it if you could use your city email address instead of your personal email address. They remind us again, because if they need to FOIA anything or do anything, it's because you've got your city email address. After the meeting tonight, if you could get with Kelso and tell her, if you're not able to get into that, we are going to notify Ed, see what the issue is, get it set up, and have you start to use that. So that's what we would like to do going forward, starting immediately, as soon as possible.
It's been kind of an ongoing issue because we've addressed Ed three or four times over the last couple of years, and it worked about a month, then it dies.
Well, then what you need to do, if it does that, immediately get ahold of me, copy me and copy Bill. Yep, we need this corrected and it needs to be done.
Need a motion on this?
I don't believe so.
I don't think we would.
And you have all of our email addresses, correct?
Yes.
The city email addresses.
Yes, yep. Because we do already automatically send them to all of that, along with any other email addresses that you've selected, we do all of them, but it's just, we're reminded again by the city clerk that we need to start doing that because we get FOIAs in.
Okay. Okay, good. Next is short-term rentals. We just received this memo from the city attorney, little or no time, and I would ask for a table until we can have the city attorney.
Or I believe it's postpone, I believe, is what you need to do, yeah.
I agree, because it was difficult to understand what he was trying to get, and I got conflicting when I read it, I didn't know. It'd be best to have him. And it would be nice if he would, if he would review what we had just submitted, the last submission, against what he's commenting on, so we could understand, and maybe he could highlight, so I could put A with A and B with B. And maybe he could highlight, so I could put A with A and B with B. Does that make sense to everyone?
Well, and I do want to show you that I do have your homework for you. So each of you will be getting a packet this evening when you leave. So in the packet, it is going to tell you the step-by-step guide of zoning amendment request. And so all the steps are here. When we open up the packet, the first is going to talk to you about short rental information that Housing North has helped myself and the city with. I've got the letter from the attorney, the memo from the attorney in there. Also, there is an example of what the short-term rental registration form will be and what it looks like. On here, we have a fee schedule. You can go ahead and get the short-term rental, a one-year tier, which is $750 for the application. A two-year is $1,000, or three years will be a tier one, which is $1,250. That will have Jerry Blue go out and do the inspection, and you'll be allowed for the one-year, two-year, or three-year. That application is on here. Also, it talks about the things that you will need along with providing proof of insurance and some other information. The next in here is a policy, and there's this kind of a question and answer sheet for all of you to review. Things like, if my home is sold, does the short-term rental permit transfer? No, it does not. And there's all kinds of other things, like what do you get for your inspection? What does it cover? The next is the zoning ordinance here, and it's highlighted in red, as you were asking, showing what the attorney has taken out and what he has added or what he has changed or what we're to delete. So that is all in here for you. And then lastly, you've got your good neighbor guide. Now, this is once everybody is approved, they've got their short-term rental going. This is a nice, just little form that we're going to be required that has to stay someplace visible in the short-term rental for the guests when they come. And it's going to talk about walking them to Manistee, telling them what are, where you can find our ordinances. During this time, they need to behave and be a good neighbor. It'll tell them their address if they need to call the police or call an ambulance. It'll tell them what their 24-hour contact name is or information, what the email address is that person who owns that home. We give them the information of emergency care, emergency and urgent care, the telephone number to the hospital, police department, the county, Manistee sheriff. We also do the short-term rental hotline, which we just established a telephone number for this hotline. We also have included the C Click Fix, how you download the app, and they can always do that. The next, we briefly just talk about noise disturbance, fires and fireworks, parking, pets, and garbage. So everybody will get one of these when they take off. Just grab one from me here. Please do your homework, and we'll have it on the agenda for next month, so.
Is that right?
Yes.
Hallelujah, we never had homework before.
Maybe you'll get a, maybe you'll get a gold star.
Oh, boy.
Roger, do you have a dog at home?
No, I don't. I have two cats.
Nothing, well, I guess you could blame it on the cats.
Yeah, no, I wish I had a dog.
So with this, we will just postpone.
Yeah.
Okay, so no motion is needed on the postponement. Good.
Really?
Move along with old business, 91 Arthur Street, Lakeside.
Move along.
Er?
I've been contacted by the Bayview Condos Association. And in turn, I contacted Ken Amor, who contacted Bridget. I have been retained to mark the boundary line between the two properties over. The condo people told me they want me to get that line marked. They are intending to put a fence up. So they, both organizations groups want to be out there when I do the work, so they'll both be there observing it. I wasn't sure when I first got the call from the condo association, I wasn't sure what kind of conflict there was. I contacted Teresa and some other people. I caught some other surveyors I knew. And I contacted Ken, who contacted Teresa, and they say, do it. So I have a written letter from Ken saying, go ahead. So even though the, I was, the condo association explained to me why they wanted me to do it. I'm not going to go into details on that, because some other issues there that we don't need to worry about. But I will be involved in marking a common line between two properties.
No, that doesn't involve the sliver.
What's that?
That doesn't involve the sliver.
The what?
The sliver?
The sliver.
No, not the sliver.
Just-
Do we question mark if I put, oh, do we know what type of a fence this is?
They, they said, they haven't told me yet. They says it's going to be private.
They'll have to obey the ordinance, the fence ordinance, so.
Can't be higher than six foot.
Good side to their neighbors.
Yes, correct.
I can understand.
And we don't have a fence permit fee yet, do we?
Makes sense.
We will be soon, so maybe before that, so, yep.
Another thing I got told is the people on the Lakeside Social, when I put the stuff in, they're going to hang a rope up on it so the condo people can also see where it is also. So both groups are going to be present today I do the survey.
Yeah, that's a good idea. You want us out there, Bob?
Yeah, you can hold right for me.
Survey party?
Yeah, I'll pay you double what you get now.
And Teresa, you have the problem.
They get now, yeah.
Yes, yep, put that in the file.
On the 91 Arthur?
Yes, that is correct.
Very good.
Yeah, good deal.
Okay, the next one, 420 Oak Street, Trinity Lutheran Lights.
So I've got the, oh, wait. Okay, so what I've done is I've shared the pictures that they sent over. This has been kind of ongoing for about three months. I know the process is slow. We have to do our certain steps of calling and then sending out letters. I've done two letters to them. This last time, they said that they were fixed. It was all good. They sent the pictures over. I wanted to put it in the packet. But tonight, with the information that I'm getting, I'm going to be following Pam home this evening. We're going to walk the parking lot and check it out, and I'm going to look at it myself. If that is the case, I will send them, you know, a letter, just giving them maybe a week. And then after that, they're going to be cited and get a citation and a ticket.
Well, they just put it through the ground. We, we used to use what, shoebox lighting, what they call? You know, everything would go to the ground, so it wouldn't go out to neighbors.
And it's been a little hard either, I've had other meetings or I've forgotten, and I don't live here, so it's hard to get there at night, so I'm going to do that tonight, and I asked Pam if I could do that.
Eight or two here, will you, huh?
I know, occasionally. I will eventually, once I get my house sells, that's right.
Yeah, good luck.
Yes, thank you.
Did they apply for a permit to change the lighting, or do they have to?
No, they were supposed to. I don't know. Some of those permits were closed out before, right before I started. So, yeah, I, I didn't have anything that I knew that it was open, so, when they did it.
Because if they did, they would have had to go buy our lighting.
Lighting plan.
Yes, yep, and they, they got that in the letter when I sent that. They know of all of that information. They received it all.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of being a religious, you know, if they could go with the, okay.
Yeah, all right. So you'll, you'll follow Pam home tonight?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Going to do that.
Okay. City master plan?
So I've sent out an email. I don't know if you've seen it yet, or actually an invitation of Save the Date Workshop. So I've been in touch with Tanya with Williams and Works about the master plan. We're going to have it, the workshop on Tuesday, December 10th, from three to five. So the workshop we're going to have from three to four is going to be about housing in the city. And then from four to five o'clock, the future land use. So two different workshops, two different interests. We've sent it out to anybody and everybody about this Save the Date. Tanya will be here. We'll have the presentation. I'm hoping to get the community college just right here, get both classrooms A and B, take out the center wall, have everything up and ready for that. Also, at that time, we are going to, oh, just let you know, I sent out an email to 188 residents and businesses so far, so I've gotten that. The next is, we're going to be putting it in the November water bill. I've talked to Kaylee downstairs. She's going to make sure that that gets out, so everybody knows about the workshop. And then the survey is going to be ready when we do have that workshop, so we can hand it out. Hard copies, you can have it on your phone. We'll have the little QR code. Also, the survey is going to go out in the December water bills, so that goes to residents and to businesses. So we're touching those areas. Also, I've met with a couple of you to review chapter one, two, and three. That's been working out great. I've also sent some copies to the city's directors so they can look at their portion, their area of expertise, that they can dig into it, read it, tell me what needs to change, what they see corrected. And then once I get it from council and a few other entities, I'm going to send it back to her in December. So, yeah, it's been going good. We're moving forward.
Brand new council.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's a whole different group there.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's true.
Thank you, Teresa.
You're welcome.
Permit reports, report.
So is there any questions? All of that is in your packet. There was a couple of things I wrote on the side that let you know, you know, what was through AGS or what was safe built before, and, but that was from January to the present. So that's just showing you how much money's been coming in, that we've been busy and working hard.
Good.
All minor closed out.
Definitely.
Pardon?
All minor closed out.
Right, well, good to know. Thank you.
Oh, I noticed that. What do we get, break share?
We're all done.
Okay, I noticed that.
Last one is city PowerPoint.
Yeah, what's it, yeah.
Okay, if you, if you don't mind, all of you turning on your screens appropriate, if you have it.
Yeah, I see that.
Can you do it where it's the whole entire thing?
Yeah. You're going to do this? He's going to do this to council?
Yeah, there you go.
No, we already did it. September 10th or something.
Go straight down to the bottom of this?
And then over at the top from the beginning. Thank you.
Missed the night of golf for that, Roger.
Thank you, sorry. All right, let's see if I can do this correctly.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
All right, so this was done a couple of months ago, I believe in August. Mark went ahead and did this in front of city council, but I thought, you know, I needed to show you guys. We need to review and see what we had planned and did and everything. So it just says a year in review, nice picture that we selected. So it says what our purpose is, and it also acts in advisory capacity for matters referred by the city commission. So we tell them when our meetings are, also our work section, our session, sorry, and our subject to the Open Meetings Act and public is invited to attend. We have the questions, who I am, the staff liaison. Look at that.
I didn't have it.
But you got too fancy.
That's right, yes, you did. You did.
I didn't have the curtain.
Oh, I thought you had the curtain. So look at Shelley, four years, Pam, five. Mitch, six. Marlene, 14. Roger, 40. Robert, Bob, eight years. Mark, 14.
Best 40 years of my life.
Fantastic. We love having you. So we talk about what our responsibilities are, master plan, site plan reviews, special use permits. We do zoning amendment requests, which we have one right now that we're going to be, that we talked about with the short-term rentals. Parcel splits, plan unit developments, which we're going to have one next meeting, a plan unit development. Work in progress, the master plan, that we're doing that, redevelopment-ready communities, our, the recertification. I am working with Andrew Stafford. We meet every two weeks. That is ongoing, keeping that recertification.
Yeah.
Some progresses, we had the 300 care center, Scooby snack shack at 21 Cypress, 77 Hancock Tabernacle Church, 91 Arthur Lakeside Social, 259 River Street Milwaukee House, 95 Maple Library, and 86 Washington North Channel Brewery. So some other things that we've done is current housing, priority sites, working with the DDA, master plan, our infrastructure, and also the neighborhoods in the local community. So we've all participated in training and education. Got those all on there. There we talk about the RRC, which we all know and continuously working with that. Any questions?
Nope.
This is Mark Whitliff, signing off.
Who's Mark Whitliff?
He's a heck of a guy, I heard.
Thank you.
That would go great.
Okay, mediocre.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Teresa.
You're welcome.
Move along to public comments, communication. This time, the chair will ask if there's anybody in the audience that has anything to say. Please approach the podium.
Oh, I just said, come on up.
And you have five minutes. We won't stop the clock.
Good after, or good evening, and thank you for having me tonight. I'm Paul Howes, and I own Salt City Car Wash, which is 1,005 Cypress Street. The purpose of me coming here tonight is I'm looking to put in storage units at the car wash, which is just downhill from the storage units on 12th Street. And they're kind of unique in the aspect of, I bought five containers. They are in the brand new. They're all uniform. They're all painted the same color, a light gray. They're partitioned off. I have two units that are two-door entry and four, three units that are three, four-door entry. So they're just like a standard storage unit. It's just that they're more heavy-duty. They're brand new. They've been one-use. I have Spicer there today to do the topo, so I can do my site plan. But before I get too invested, I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. I believe I'm on the agenda for next month, and I just wanted to kind of put a word in your ear to make you aware of that and what we would like to do. We do plan on using a lot of the facility for what we already have, which is the lighting that's along the parking lot. And if I didn't say this, it would be between the driveway and the actual car wash, so the entry of the driveway and the actual car wash, we would use the lighting. There's two poles there along that driveway. We'd use that lighting by turning it or adding an additional similar light. We already have security cameras that we've put in. We actually just updated one of the wash bays. So I've retired from education, so I'm putting some time, more time into it and so forth. The units that I have are currently at our farm in Marilla, so I'm storing them there until I hear otherwise. But I think that's all I have to say, and I appreciate your time. Have a great night. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for that.
Anyone else?
There you go.
All right. Move along to staff and board reports.
Board reports?
Yeah.
So I wanted to let you know about the master plan pop-up event. I went to the Fall Festival, and Kelso helped me with that. Should have probably printed some pictures, but I did post it on Facebook. We had a great turnout of kids. We had a small little duck pond that we created, and the ducks had, you know, hats and ghosts and stuff like that on them. The kids had to actually pick up a duck, find out what number, and then they got a prize from that. So that kept them a little bit busy while I grabbed the parents and said, hey, here's a marker. I want to hear from you. What is the things you like about the city? What are things that you don't like about the city? Where do you want to see some developments? But what I was surprised with is I had numerous teenagers want that marker, and they wrote things down. So when I talked to Williams and Works, they're like, this is the great event by having something like this pop up. We did it, and we got that other input, so we're going to put that all together, send it over to Tanya. She can add that with the other pop-up event that I had. You know, the other pop-up was, you know, adults and beverages and talking and music. This was different. So it was great to have. It was super, super windy.
Very cold.
Very cold. But we had fun, and we had some great pictures, and the kids, I tell you what, they lined up. They were patient. Nobody stormed us. I mean, the kids all helped each other. It was, yeah, cute. It was a lot of fun, so it was a good event.
Very good, very good.
The next?
Costume?
No, no.
She was like an Eskimo.
Yeah, I was, yeah, because it was cold. No sun.
Looked like a little fur, uh, covered in fall.
Where were you able to set it up?
Right in front of the Vogue Theater. Right in front of the Vogue Theater.
Oh, okay.
Yep, right there. And then the Vogue, they went up on top of the roof there, and, yeah, they had their costumes, it was, it was great, really good, so. The next in front of you, you've got their Michigan Planner Magazine there in front of you. And I thought, what a great topic that's there, it's called about community engagement. And we're going to be doing that in December. I just did that with the pop-up event, so it's great on there. Also, I believe it's Page 4, is some good information about the community engagement. Also, towards the end of that, it talks about that there's going to be offering some webinars, and I've actually already signed up for one of the Association of Planning Michigan Childcare Readiness webinar, because we know how childcare is a huge need in our community. And so I've already signed up for that, it was $20 to do that webinar, it also counts for my credits, and so I'm going to be taking that, so.
Oh, yeah, I see, yeah, very good.
The next thing I wanted to quick talk about was the OUID, or the weed shop with their sign that they have. Next Tuesday, Toby is going to be going out and just taking some more pictures again for me, and then we're going to give them a ticket. It's been way overdue, long overdue, we can't just go there and just take it down, we do have to do that. Problem is, I don't know if they'll get it, they have received three letters, and the last one, she did a, what is that called, the mailing? Certified mailing?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, and it all, everything comes back, so, yeah.
Even open?
No, 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 but even when they were open, they weren't responding or anything.
The, like I was telling Kelso, they have the store in Bueller, or Denzie, whatever it is.
It's open occasionally, but it's mostly closed.
I'm going through that tomorrow, area tomorrow.
Okay. And when we call there.
And see if I can get a phone number.
Okay, well, because the phone is disconnected there, it's not working.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. So, next, just kind of giving you an update about the CHIL grant, we did receive 70 applications now. Tracy Davis and I are now reviewing the applications, taking all the information, putting it in Excel, and figuring out verification of income. We've had the NRBC helping us review those, making sure that we've done our due diligence. And the next process, we're hoping in the next couple of weeks, that we'll be able to get those letters out to tell the people who, the 12 to 14 people, that we're going to be able to initiate, and they've been awarded that, and so it's exciting, it's very exciting. So we're finally getting somewhere with that.
Any thought about an additional monies coming in for CHIL grants? I know at one time, they thought that there might be a second round.
Not sure yet, because Ms. Schre, we even have a class tomorrow, they're literally working and doing work while we're there, they don't have their act together, so I don't know, hopefully they will, but.
Because I was wondering if, if the people who have their application in now, if they would be retained if there was a follow-on CHIL grant?
No, after six months, they would have to do it all over again, so we already know that. Yeah, but still, they would be a pro at it, they'd know what to do, we'd offer the classes again and do that, but, yeah, we'll have to see, but I just, it's just not been real organized, so, yeah.
That's a good question.
Yeah, it is, though. Next, in December, I want to let you know that Vider is here in the audience today, but he is going to be coming to us with a PUD, a Plan Unit Development. So just a little bit of what that entails, we've done the site plan review, next, we're going to be doing the public hearing, which we'll have that on December 5th meeting. We have to do a mailing for 300 feet all around the property, and then publicize in the newspaper and stuff, so we have several things that we need to do. So that's going to be coming to you in December. The next one is 1005 Cypress, the car wash, the gentleman that was just here. Yep, he's going to be coming, I'll put him on the agenda, so he can talk a little bit more, and have some pictures and examples and stuff that he wants to do for that. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
That's enough.
Kelso, you have anything?
No.
No?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sending out the letter, the update every week, so thank you.
Yes, the newsletter, absolutely, yep, big help.
That's very nice to have.
Move along to members, Bob?
Uh-huh.
Change up on us.
Only thing I got, I liked how the city fire station is looking now. It's, I'm glad they're talking about not painting it, and just keeping it the natural brick, it looks great.
It does.
Yeah, it is.
Other than that, that's all I got.
Okay, Nick?
So I, I see that they've been, the city's been working on the sidewalks, but in some of the areas, just the cutting that they did, hopefully, there's going to be follow-on, because there's areas that are worse now than they were before.
Is that the grinding?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, because, you know, there were sides, you know, you got grinding this, sideways this way, and a grinding down this way. If you were on a walker, there's no way you could navigate those, those side streets like that. But, but hopefully, that was temporary, and I know they said when there was so many inches of a rise, that they were going to be pulled out and replaced. I just don't know if we could find out if there's any kind of timeline or any process for.
Yeah.
But 4th Street is pretty rough.
Second, too.
Yes.
The only question I had was, when they put in the new Welcome to Manistee signs, they took out, on the south end of town, they took out the medallions for all the service organizations, and I know that they were going to put them back, but they still haven't put them back yet. And it would just be nice to have those back up.
Oh, absolutely, okay.
Since we gave them the permission so that they could put that monument sign where it was, because we actually had to permit for that site.
Okay, all right, I will find out. I can ask that at my director's meeting, it won't be Tuesday, but the following Tuesday, we meet.
I think you're at, Jeff Scott or something?
He said that he, yes, and there were two locations that they discussed, both of them would be fine, I, you know, but, yeah, they, they need to both be there, and I know that other organizations have been asking about putting their signs up, and I go, well, there's one that you could put up.
Right, okay, good.
That's it.
Shall we?
Nothing.
Nothing. Roger?
I would just like to know if we have anything to do with the MCC building? Does the city?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is that all the, through the diocese? You don't know if anybody's looking at it, or interested in buying it?
No.
They wouldn't come to the city?
The only discussion that I'm aware of is taxation, that the city has discussed with the diocese about taxing for that.
But I mean, the, you know, future use of it.
Yeah, that's unavailable.
We should have something to say about it. I mean, the city, you know, if it, if they're going to put it out, they'd approve it. Just, that's all, that's all my, that's it, Mark, thank you.
All right, thank you. I don't see it on the list, but the house, and I don't have the address, the 6th Street House, that there was issues with, that possible demolition on that.
Is it regarding the cats, or people living in the house?
Probably, no, not the cat house.
Okay, the other one? All I can say is, that is quickly moving forward.
Because I saw a dumpster there, in the street.
Yeah.
And then, what is it, 5 Davis Street? Somebody bought that house, oh, gosh, what is it, 530 Davis? Are we doing that? That, that house had a fire in it at one point, so they're redoing it. It doesn't look bad, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're redoing.
Right down the street.
Yeah, yeah, they're redoing that one. Slow but sure, Marco.
And then, I guess, you know, the cat house, where do we stand on the cat house?
That, they went to court over that, and I believe they've got.
Cat's one.
A couple of months to figure out what they want to do, or what they're going to do with it. Yeah, the judge gave them a little bit of time to figure out.
The owners.
Yeah.